I am going to start, just a couple of things. Roxanne will call on you. If you want to speak, just raise your hand. And she will see you and call on you. Before you speak, say your name. That's helpful, I think, just for, we don't know how people are accessing if anybody is. So with that being said, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Roxanne, why don't you go ahead and do roll call?
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yeah.
Davis?
Somebody has their speaker on. Could they turn it off? Or Roxanne, start muting people?
Okay. Mrs. Engel?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Malone?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McBrattan?
Here.
Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Som?
Here.
Mr. Washington? Eight here, one absent.
Tom, would you say something?
What do you want me to say?
You're the one that seems to be reverberating. Would you just say one, two, three?
One, two, three.
Is he reverberating for anybody else?
Yeah. Yep.
Yes.
You've got to mute, you've got to mute the microphone on your computer, Tom. If you're going to use your phone.
I just muted him.
Okay. That'll take care of him. Are there any residents and property owners out there that would like to speak? Hearing none. We have no information items. I do not believe we have any committee or commission board reports, comments of town councilors. And let me just start first by saying, thank you all for, and Roxanne as well, for quickly getting this, getting us set up and up to speed. We're going to have lots of glitches, I'm sure, on this new technology. And somebody's speaker is on, or audio is on, because there's a lot of, you know, reverb, or whatever you want to call it. Okay, so I'm the only one that's not muted?
Yeah, I'm muted. Yep. I don't know where that's coming from.
Okay, is everybody muted?
Can anybody, if you can hear me, raise your hand.
I can hear you. This is Mary.
Okay, good. All right, I think we got rid of some of the noise. Linda, can you hear me? I think we lost Linda.
(laughing)
Can somebody text her and see if she can hear us? Because I can't, I got my, I'm using my cellphone.
You don't have her muted, right?
No.
This is so weird. I'll text her.
I just did.
Okay. So it's showing that she's on her headset, and muted, unmuted, muted, unmuted.
Yeah, I checked, I just clicked it up to make sure she was up. Yeah. Who has a dog?
Oh, that was mine.
Okay.
And I've even got my door closed, but he's crazy. My text message was delivered to her, but she has not responded.
Um, maybe, let me see if you're- Are you back, Linda? Can you hear us?
She just commented in the chat box that she can hear us.
Ah, yes, that's it.
All right. But we can't hear her. He's not muted. I didn't change anything. Okay. Well. I'm going to try muting and then unmuting again, see if that opens it up. She's unmuted now. Maybe can she try dialing in again? Linda, can you try dialing in again? Hanging up and dialing in.
She's going to try dialing in, she just texted.
Okay.
She said, "Bill, take over."
Bill, you've got the controls.
All right, let's unmute him. Okay, Bill, I'm muted.
Okay. Okay, so we did roll call. I think we're skipping residents and property owners, because we can't even hear ourselves. Informational items have done. Committee and board report?
I was very careful about that.
You were under review of comments of town councilors.
Oh, yeah, that's where we were. Okay, comments of town councilors. Somebody wave their hand, or chat if they want to speak? Guess not, hearing none. Let me get back to where I was. I'll entertain a motion to review and approve the meeting. Let's see, there are one, two, three, four prior meetings, if anyone would like to make a motion. I'll tell you what, I'll make the motion, I'll look. Kevin makes the motion.
I'll second.
That was John?
I'm here. I'm here, can you hear me?
Hi, Linda.
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
Okay, okay. I just redialled in. I don't know what happened. That was strange.
I think it's my bad.
Okay, where are we, Bill?
We just, a motion and a second to review all four meeting minutes and approve.
Okay.
Ready for discussion.
Any corrections, additions? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel? Mr. Malone?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McBrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, eight in favor, zero opposed.
I happen to come into the meeting.
Okay, motion. Oh, welcome, Mike.
Okay.
Dane?
Let me call on you for the minute?
Yes.
Okay, so that's nine in favor, zero opposed. All righty, let's go.
Okay. You have communications, have no referrals. Let's start with subcommittee reports. Admin?
Admin has not met.
Finance?
Finance did meet, and I have my WPCA meeting open, but not my report. Give me one second. Town Council Finance Committee held its regular meeting on Wednesday, March 18th, at 5:00 p.m. via video conference. Links to the meeting were provided on the agenda for residents to participate, undid. The committee continued to discuss a funding plan for future replacement of the high school's multi-use artificial turf, and to set up funding lines in the budget with annual contributions, so the town will have the necessary $450,000 on hand by the time the turf is due for replacement in approximately 12 years. Make sure this is the right meeting. 18th, yeah. The committee, oh, so additional edits were made on the resolution, and the committee will likely vote on it at our next regular meeting. The committee also continued to discuss their concern over the balance in the Undesignated Fund, the Mill Rate Stabilization Fund, and the Undesignated Fund's impact on labor's bond rating. The Finance Director provided some information about possible sources of funds to improve the Undesignated Fund while still attempting to deliver a zero mill rate, mill tax rate, tax increase with FY 2021 budget as follows. So I'm going to try and say this quickly. By the end of the fiscal year, the Undesignated Fund balance is forecast to be approximately 2.5 million. Our budget will, the 21 budget will reduce the Healthcare Reserve Fund from its current balance of a million to 574,000, and the Mill Rate Mitigation Fund balance from 1295, 1.295 to 0. These funds will be used to offset cost increases in the proposed budget resulting in no tax The committee discussed moving in the remaining, moving the remaining 574,000 in the Healthcare Fund to the Undesignated Fund, which we can do, and possibly moving some funds owed to the town by the police station project to the Undesignated Fund as well. Those funds will still be available if they're needed for future healthcare cost increases. The net effect of those transfers would bring the Undesignated Fund balance from its current 4.25% up to 6%. Bonding agencies recommend a fund balance of 10% to 15% is enough. So the projections are estimates right now, and we took no action, we just discussed these possibilities. The committee believes that delivering a zero increase will have a negative effect on the town's bonding rate, but given the current state of the local and national economy, a tax increase would have a more negative impact on residents and businesses. The committee found approximate 50, additional $50,000 in line item reductions during its three-budget workups, discussed a possible means of further reducing line items of approximately $10,000. No final conclusions, no further adjustments were made, and the next regular meeting is next Wednesday, April 1st. Everything else discussed at the regular meeting is on tonight's agenda. And then I go on to talk about the coming meetings, which are all up in the air regarding the budget. And that's my report. Sorry it's long.
Does anybody have any questions for Bill? I just wanted to clarify, Roxanne, people are muted. Do you have them muted, or have they muted themselves?
Well, I did have people muted, and then I muted them, and, but it looks like they've muted themselves now.
Okay, I just want to make sure if anybody has anything to say, they can say it. Kevin, you're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
I'm muted.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that anybody could speak if they needed to. Okay, no questions for Bill? Anything else from Finance, Bill?
Nope, that's it. Our next meeting is this coming Wednesday. We're planning to hold it. And I think we have to take our final action on the budget. To recommend it.
Right. Okay, moving on to land use?
Land use has not met. I have nothing, nothing to report.
Okay.
It sounded like when you unmuted, the reverb was coming on your end.
And just so you know, that does not mean it's your fault. We're finding it. We're finding out a few things. Okay, are there any other, let's see, no other subcommittees? Let's start with liaison reports. Let's start with you, Bill.
First had to unmute myself, now I'll get my report back. Got it. The WPCA held its first online regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. last night via remote link published on the town website. The chair reported that during the SARS pandemic, there was some risk of contract, contracting the virus by breathing the fumes from the waste treatment plant. It's believed that the same condition does not hold for the novel coronavirus, and that information was provided then by Connecticut Deep. The WPCA has suspended March late fees. Shut offs have also been suspended, and payment plans will be set up for residents that have difficulty paying. In addition, all cross connections and inspections have been suspended. Further, Xylem Controls, still on the picture, has asked for $25,000 as payment for the $30,000 they claim the WPCOs for the work they did not complete. The WPCA feels that Fussin O'Neal presented a strong case of malfeasance by Xylem, and has verbally offered a $5,000 payment because Xylem did do some of the work. WPCA's offer was also verbally accepted by Xylem, and they're drawing up the paperwork. There's also been no progress on the Gallup Hill Tank Removal, and that project has been put on hold, that's why there's no project, or no progress. And that's my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Bill? Okay, any other liaison reports? Mary, do you have any?
No, I don't, Linda.
Okay. Anyone else have any liaison reports?
No, nothing here.
Okay. Then let's-
Kevin, I just have one thing. I don't know if anybody had noted, but we had received an unfavorable reply, I forgot this on my land use report. The Planning and Zoning Commission had provided an unfavorable report against the Tri-Town Trail Committee.
Yes, and if I can find the email, I did hear from the Tri-Town Trail people, and they are, let me look really quick. They are process of, processing, in the process of authorizing a document to address the unfavorable report, and they will get back to us, et cetera. They're in consultation with an engineering firm, yada, yada, yada. So they are aware, they are working on it, and they will get back to us sometime in April. So if there are no other liaison reports, oh, John, did you have anything?
No, I'm good, Linda.
Okay. So Mayor's, Mayor's report.
All right, so thank you all for bearing with this craziness. The last two weeks have been absolutely off-the-wall nuts. I think I participated in more webinars in the last 10 days than probably my life. But that's where we are right now. So as you know, we closed the town hall on March 16th to public access. Turned out it was a very good move. We are continuing to provide service to people. We had Public Works install a locked, secure drop box at the front of the town hall, and on day one, that was used five times for people to drop off documents, payments, whatever. And we're checking it very routinely throughout the day, so that's working out well, while we try to continue with the social distancing thing. The last report, as you probably saw from the governor, is that he is likely going to keep schools closed for the rest of the year, hoping to start in August. So to that end, we're kind of planning around what could be a very long time for us. I'll just show you this graph quick, see if you can see it. That graph is the number of cases in Connecticut since this started, with the low end at the flat line, and it's going up at a crazy rate now. So we are desperately trying to flatten that curve, as they all say, and we now have pressure on us to close all basketball courts, tennis courts, and playscapes. So we have to come up with a plan in the next two days to cordon them off, to fence them off, to physically take down the basketball hoops, if that's what we have to do. Tennis courts are a little easier, because we can chain and padlock them, but there's still a lot of stuff to do there, because as much as we've done, they still want us to do more. We cut off bulky waste pickup. That wasn't by choice, that was by Willimantic Waste Directive, that they are not doing that because they have to handle stuff. There was a little bit of concern about continuing trash and recycling service, but in one of the 13 executive orders from the governor, he did state that trash hauling service is an essential service, thankfully, because otherwise, things would get really ugly. I did lay off all part-time staff. Anybody that was part-time was, was cut very quickly, and it is very likely that more layoffs will be coming, not because we want to, but because we really have to. And one of the things that we're going to do is put the savings from those payrolls into the Mill Rate Stabilization Fund, because as I stated in the COG meeting this morning, if you drive by either casino today, you will notice something, which is not a penny, is going into the Pequot Fund right now. And with that, I have to believe that the state revenues are going to be down dramatically, which will translate to us. So it's something we need to consider, so that is moving ahead. I will be seeking approval for an emergency expenditure for what is called the radio bridge. This was something that the chief, the police chief, John Rich, had asked for in his budget in the capital plan. I had looked to defer that for an additional year. However, given the circumstances that we're in now, we may really need that system. And so what that bridge does is it will allow us to connect to the state police, Groton, Stonington, Waterford, and Norwich. And what we're being asked to do right now, from an emergency services perspective, is come up with agreements with neighboring towns that have police service, so that if our police service were to be decimated, we would have service covered by one or two neighboring towns, and they're asking us to do the same thing. So that expenditure is about $14,000. The proposal from Jim Mann as Emergency Management Director and Chief Rich will include drawing existing funds from two existing capital radio accounts to fund that radio bridge. And I can provide you how we've gotten to where we are, but I've asked a lot of questions about it, about the true emergency need of it, as well as if we approve this expenditure, ultimately, is it available for one? How quickly can it be installed for two? And how long will it take for this system to be online? And all those questions have been answered at this point. And the MOU from the state of Connecticut has been bounced back and forth a couple times with some clarification of language, so that part is going well. Over to something the councillor, Som, stated about the budget. An executive order 7C, specifically item five, it talks about, and this is just excerpted language, it says, "Any budget deadlines that fall on or before May 15th may automatically be extended by 30 days." So that could be important in terms of the town councils needing to approve the budget by the end of the month. So I need to still get clarification, because even if you extend the town council's final go-ahead on the budget, if you extend it out to that point, it's also probably passed. I think it would be past the actual time to vote, which is no longer required, by the way. We do not have to have a referendum vote for the budget, but we do still need to have the ability to have a public hearing. And that public hearing would have to happen just like we are right now. So that was a webinar that I participated in today about, there was a couple FOI attorneys, and how we need to address that. So the town council can ultimately approve the budget and set the mill rate without having the meeting and the vote, but you have to still have the public hearing and have the ability to receive comments from taxpayers. Let's see, what else? Oh, that executive order 7C that I referred to, they also made a follow-up, which should be useful for WPCA, as well as the Gales Ferry Taxing District, and that too extended their deadlines out by 30 days. So that was that piece of it. The other item that I wanted to share with you is, you probably recall the Lantern Hill Road Bridge that we were supposed to be sharing with the town of Stonington. And the town of Stonington decided that they didn't want to participate in the replacement of that bridge. So during this process, I asked a couple of questions, and I asked a couple of questions to the State Bridge Department, and found that that bridge is in fact not even our bridge, it's not on our inventory, it's actually on Stonington's inventory. So we had budgeted $375,000 a year for last year and this year, expecting to share in the cost of that bridge. Stonington has decided not to. So I think I'm going to send a letter to Stonington to make them aware, which they already are verbally, that in fact it's not even our bridge, it's theirs, and that we had funded for it, and they had an MOU with us, and they've now decided not to do that. And I hate to do it, but I think what it's going to ultimately end up doing is saying, "The ball is now in your hands, Stonington, because this is your bridge." Let me see what other notes I have. The other important things with the executive orders and the FOI things involve the public access, and it has to be real time. So things like Google Meets apparently does not meet the letter of the law for freedom of information. WebEx does, GoToMeeting does, Zoom, to a lesser extent, does, and Microsoft Teams is what's considered the best in terms of secure. The other things that are important, too, are that newspaper notices that we would normally post, say, a public hearing notice, and we can still have public hearings this way, they're permitted. But if you were to post public hearing notice, you don't have to post it in the newspaper at this point. What we are required to do is post it, what they said is prominently on your town's website, and let people know that this public hearing is happening, and you post it that way. But we don't have to post it to the newspaper, and we don't have to post it in the town clerk's office right now. What we're required to do is post it to the town clerk's office after we return to business as usual. And we don't know how long that's going to be, but it could be a while. So basically, my life has been consumed with the COVID response stuff. We've been trying to, you know, get the town staff as lean and nim- Um, we've been trying to, uh, you know, get the town staff as lean and nimble as possible. I think that, um, we're actually in a better position than a number of towns right now, that we have laptops that are available, so if we're not able to continue working from town hall, and that is something that the Governor is carefully looking at right now, um, we have the ability to work remotely, at least to the level of department heads. Um, so we will have some, some continued, we'll have a lot of continued functionality, but things are going to have to change again pretty dramatically. Uh, the other thing that we had to do was we had to have a partner town, so from the perspective of registrars and town clerks, we had to have another neighboring town that's willing to cover for us, so if we have to be quarantined, they're actually handling all our ballot work and, and town clerk work, and vice versa. So, it's, um, it's a, I wouldn't say it's an unprecedented time, it is a highly unusual time. I'm, I know things like this have happened in the past. Um, first time in my life that we've had a virus that's, um, been as, as nimble and effective as this one has. Um, the state epidemiologist, Dr. Matthew Carter, today expects about 10% of our population to get it in the first wave, which you're looking at about 360,000 cases, and they're projecting about 4,000 deaths from it in this first round. So we have to, we have to make sure that we're prepared to cover, and we have to make sure that people like the lieutenant are ready to fill the role for the chief, if the chief is down and out for 14 days. So, um, we've learned a lot, there's a lot of, uh, backup plans that have been put in place because of this, uh, but I think we're in a pretty good place right now. So, um, with that, I know it was lengthy, and I apologize, but I really wanted to get you guys up to speed on the hectic pace that we're at.
Thank you, Mayor, we appreciate all you're doing. Does anybody have any questions for the Mayor?
Yes, this is Mary.
I'm sorry, Ondra?
Uh, Mayor, which town did we partner with regarding the clerks?
The town, the town clerk, uh, partner town is Montville. Uh, our town clerk made that decision. Uh, she came to me before making that decision, but she decided, because Montville is very similar in size to Ledyard, uh, there was a concern that Preston is a neighboring town. However, we're more than three times the size of Preston in terms of population, so the concern was that it could be overwhelming to Preston. So, uh, we ended up opting for Montville.
Um, Mary? Yes. Uh, Mayor, uh, has there been any consideration in this trillion-dollar package that is being discussed in Washington about helping municipalities? I mean, I, are, are, do you know if they're going to receive any consideration, any help at all?
I, I don't, I don't believe so. What I heard today was they're expecting, the state of Connecticut is expecting about three and a half billion dollars from the Fed, which will be specifically for small businesses to prevent them from failing. And then the other piece of that was a billion dollars which will go to the hospitals.
Okay.
But municipalities were not mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions for the Mayor?
Glad you're at the helm, Mayor.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Um, I should mention that the, uh, Ledyard Food Pantry is open, um, and as long as we have volunteers and food, we, we will stay open unless otherwise directed. Uh, we've gone to a drive-through, um, situation, so we've taken all the precautions, um, but it's certainly, um, a little more challenging than it, than it has been. But, um, people have been hanging tough as far as the volunteers, and, uh, we'll continue to provide for those that, that need it. Um-
Can we leave, Linda, can we leave a donation, uh, like, when I say donation, I mean food on the steps, if we know you're going to open at nine?
Okay, so what we've done, uh, so I'll, I'll, since you ask, I will clarify a little bit. Um, we have a drive-through, and, um, if you drive to the pantry, there is a grocery cart, uh, that says donations. You can just drive up to it, get out of your car, put the donations in, in the cart, and that can be done, um, on, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, uh, from nine to 11. Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, nine to 11. But if you see the cart there, certainly leave, and then we wheel that cart into the garage. Um, the garage, by the way, that, uh, we've been talking about with the church, has turned out to be a great resource for a lot of things that we've needed to do here during this transition, as far as location for the cone that we have set out, the grocery carts, thank you to Village Market, um, lots of good cooperation among local businesses in terms of food and donations, et cetera. And, well, I'll, I'll give a special thanks, I put out a call for eggs, because we, our regular donor of eggs is out of production as far as donations, and I had, um, 100 dozen eggs from various sources come in, uh, somewhere in time donated 30, 30 dozen, Fireside donated 30 dozen, and then two dozen here, two dozen there, and then the ladies from, the chicken ladies, from our, um, Voag Department are producing eight dozen a week for us. So, uh-
Oh, good.
Everybody is doing their part. Um, and, um, thank you for asking the question, Mary. Okay, any other, any other questions for the Mayor? Okay, moving on to old business. Um, I'm going to ask Bill for you to take that one.
Okay. Uh, I move to revisit and act on the motion to authorize the Mayor to submit a Hudson Grant application in amount to be determined, but a minimum of $300,000 for Ledyard High School multi-use bike, bicycle pathway on Colonel Ledyard Highway from Ledyard High School to Ledyard Center. In addition, grant a bid waiver to CLA engineers to prepare the application documentation, the amount of $10,800, which is already budgeted. And if grant funding is approved, town council approval will be requested for funding the town match when that amount is known, before the project commences.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I, I believe that was Ondra seconded. Bill?
Okay, yep, okay. So we, we voted on this at the last town council meeting, but there was one slight change, uh, that the, uh, Planning Director needed to make, and that is, there is a town match, we don't know what it is, but at the time, she thought that there was no town match. So we've changed the, I can't remember if we did it last time or this time, but we're, we're calling it a multi-use bicycle pathway, um, because that looks better than sidewalks alone, and sidewalks, um, don't have as good a chance. So, the only diff, the only change for us that, that matters is that there could be a town match. Um, but again, we don't, we won't vote on the project itself until we know what the project costs and what the town match is.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls? Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, there is no other old business? Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Hearing none, uh, back to you, Bill, Finance?
I move to grant a bid waiver to Charles Pasteryak Jr. for paving, Inc., Inc., for paving and incidental services for the 2020 calendar year.
Second.
Uh, Tom, okay, um, just one second, Bill, because I want to clarify, because we did get direction on this. If you're going to speak, um, it's important to say who you are, because while we know who everybody is and recognizes the voices, any members of the public might not. So who seconded that, please?
Counselor Tom Malone seconded the motion.
Thank you. Bill?
Okay, so, um, the state has, as, as you probably know, uh, puts out bids for, for the paving contractor to be selected by the towns. Uh, so, so paving contractors submit bids, um, someone wins, and we have some concerns about how that process works, because the bids are really, as, as the Public Works Director, they're really bases, based on per ton of asphalt, and that's not the only cost in a project. Um, and, uh, a bidder can quickly make up for their low bid on the price of asphalt by just using more asphalt. Um, we have had some experience with bidders in the past, we've used a number of different contractors, um, and we have found that, uh, this Charles Pasteryak has a good track record with the town of Ledyard, he's done good work for us in the past, as I think we've all experienced ourselves, and the Public Works Director is asking him to do it again. Uh, in the past, he's not only done a good job, but he's, he's done a remarkably inexpensive job. He's careful with the use of asphalt, doesn't use more than he needs to, um, but gets the job done so that it's, it's also not, uh, it's not undercut with too little asphalt. He went on, uh, I couldn't begin to repeat everything that he said to us, but, uh, I do remember Mr. Pasteryak, I remember doing this in the past because of our satisfaction with him, and the Public Works Director, Director is suggesting we do it again.
Are there any questions for Bill? Hearing none, Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davis?
He, uh, yes?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls? Mr. Malone?
Mr. Malone votes yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Uh, motion carries, uh, next item is also yours, Bill?
I move to approve two tax refunds in the total amount of $5,533, each of which exceeds the $2,400 in accordance with Tax Collector Departmental Procedures.
Mr. Malone seconds the motion.
Discussion?
Okay, so, uh, this is fairly routine. Uh, the Finance Committee, uh, Committee looked at both of these applications at last week's meeting. Um, one is a home owned by the Ledyard Baptist Church, the other is a, a resident home. Um, both of them paid twice, and the Tax Collector's paperwork is in, in, uh, good order.
Okay, um, are there, uh, any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls? Mr. Malone?
Mr. Malone votes yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Uh, motion carries. Um, under general, general items, um, I would like, want to take this opportunity to chat just a minute about how this, how this went. Now, we seem to, um, have done better here at the end. I'm not sure whether we got better or the connection got better. Um, Bill, do you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, I, I think the connection gets better because network traffic slows down. Um, and we had the same experience last night with WPCA, we also started at seven o'clock. We had a really hard time. We did a, a trial run at six o'clock to make sure everybody could get connected. Uh, it was pretty challenging, and as the evening wears on, it does get better, and that's, those, those are my thoughts. I put the rest of my thoughts in an email to, uh, the Chair, and, and to the Mayor, and to the MIS Director. Um, we, we, I really think we should have a backup platform to look at, and I hope there's a better one than WebEx. My experience is that most company, most big companies use it, uh, have been using it for a long time. I've been on conference calls for the past three weeks on WebEx, have all been fine, and I also sus- suspect, um, WebEx, I'm sure Cisco has the capability to control the network and meter its customers, and I think we're small potatoes. So, I think we're going to continue to have problems with WebEx, and we should be looking around.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I tell you one other thing? I, I saw that we had some residents, and it's, it's nice to see residents join. I see Alex Whittle, Vince Whittle's son, Eric Treister, and some other folks, so it's good. Thank you.
We'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Kevin did.
Kevin, and that was, uh, John seconded it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say one thing before we stop talking.
Go ahead.
If you're going to follow the protocol, identifying yourself, and, and do your, do your vote, then we ought to follow that protocol consistently, uh, and not just say yes, because, uh, as you said, Linda-
But if Roxanne is calling the roll, she's saying the name.
Okay.
It's just when you're commenting, you want to identify yourself. I believe, um, the Mayor was in on, um, the call about that, or at least I got something that came through. And when you're, when you're talking or discussing, it's when you want to start with your name. Like, for instance, this conversation right here, I should, I should have started by saying, Chairman, this is Chairman Davis, or this is Linda Davis, um, and not assume, especially in my case, where I haven't gotten my audi, my video off yet, or my, my, um, camera off yet, um, it's probably as important. So, um, at any rate, we'll get better, I'm sure we'll get better. Any other comments before we, um, I move to adjourn?
Yeah, just one, just one really quick. Um, the, the purpose of that identifying yourself piece is that when you have, uh, residents that are calling in, they don't necessarily under, they don't necessarily know all our voices. So, it's helpful for the residents, if they're on the call, to understand who said what. That's all.
Very good.
This is Bill, it's going to take practice, we'll get better.
Yeah, I will.
For sure. We, we got better as we got to the end.
I hope so.
Okay, and with that, without any objection, I'll consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.